Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on November 22, and it's 7:05 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to appoint a new member of the Board of Selectmen. And may I have a motion to appoint Michael J. Burke as Selectman for the term expiring on November 13, 2023?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, Marcy? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I did have a chance to, and I apologize for missing the interview with Mr. Burke, but I did have a chance to listen to that in detail, and I very much appreciate the thorough discussion, and particularly appreciate all your answers. I thought they were terrific, so thank you.
I'd like to say, well, we can't welcome you yet, but thank you so much for wanting to do this, and we are really looking forward to having your expertise on the board.
Thank you so much.
So, any other discussion? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, Kate. Now Barbara Vidal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Town Clerk will swear Mr. Burke in.
Okay, I'm ready to write in for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a Selectman for the town of Darien to the best of your abilities to help him die?
I do.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
I love that you have that ready to go. That's impressive, actually. That was like...
But now it's not fitting in there nicely.
You know what, Kate? Yeah, squish it. Yeah, fold it in half and then slide...
We're trying to make you look official already.
Well, I was optimistic.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate.
Hey, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, I'm giving up.
Oh, no. Do we have tape?
I don't have tape, no. Where would my copies sit or where?
Oh, you did it.
I think we did it.
Yay!
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
We were thinking positive.
I like it. I like it.
Okay, so next order of business. Before I give my first Selectmen's report, I want to take a moment to speak about public comment, which is later in the agenda. The Board welcomes hearing from the public, but asks that those interested in speaking on a topic do so in a respectful manner. Comments should last no longer than two minutes, and there should be no expectation of dialogue with Board members. Public disparaging of anyone, Board members, town staff, or other fellow residents will not be tolerated. On our COVID update, to date, 97.6% of Darien residents are fully vaccinated. We held two large Saturday clinics. The last one was actually just this last Saturday, for children aged five to 11. And so far, between those two clinics, 742 children have received their first dose. Those children will receive their second dose December 4th and December 11th. And booster shots and flu shots are still available at the Tuesday clinics, and it's fine to get them on the same day. Please bring a record of your COVID vaccination. Testing continues to be offered by EverPoint Monday through Friday. Please call for an appointment. Go through everpointhealth.com. On community events, Thursday is the annual Turkey Bowl. Yes, it's also Thanksgiving. Darien versus New Canaan. This year's friendly rivalry will take place at the Dunning Field in New Canaan. And tickets to the game are sold out, but the game will be aired live on DAF Media, so go Blue Wave. The spirit of friendly rivalry between Darien and New Canaan continues with the annual Most Generous Competition. Members of the Darien community give to the community fund of Darien, while the New Canaan community raises funds for the New Canaan Community Foundation. Whichever community raises the most money for its charity wins the Turkey Trophy and the title of Most Generous Community. The competition begins on November 18, but it ends on midnight on Thanksgiving Day, so it's never too late to take Darien over the finish line for this competition. Today, I participated in the groundbreaking ceremony for the Corbin Project downtown Darien. It smarts a very exciting time for all of us living and working in Darien. The annual and old-fashioned holiday at Tilly Pond Park is on Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00. Enjoy holiday treats by the warm fire as you listen to the Capella Group, sorry about that, Beachside Express perform. At 5:00, the Darien Sports Shop will host a menorah and tree lighting ceremony, and an additional menorah lighting ceremony will be held each night of Hanukkah at 6:00 PM in the Grove Street Plaza, with a special lighting event taking place on Wednesday, December 1. I'd like to mention that there was an unfortunate incident of anti-police graffiti in one of our parks. I feel this does not represent the feelings of Darien residents towards our police department. Finally, I had the honor of participating in the final event of the 2020 Bicentennial Committee, which was held at the Museum of Darien last Friday evening. The committee, and in particular its chairman, Al Miller, did a remarkable job of planning events over the last two years to commemorate Darien's 200th birthday. Thank you to all that supported their efforts. So that's what I have for my report. Board Liaisons, Sarah?
On the next list, we have Town Administrator.
I just have one thing. Highland Farm landscaping work has begun. So I was very happy to be able to tell you that.
We're very happy to hear that.
I took pictures and everything, so...
People are going to be very happy to hear that. Thank you, Kate.
Okay, and, sorry, Kate, I didn't have that on here. Liaison, do you have it?
Yes. So I'd like to give an update on the pedestrian safety campaign. We've been working with the Police Commission, working with Bren Hayes on the Police Commission, and some representatives from the RTM, and with Noble House Media. And we have a campaign called Think Smart Before You Start, focused on the pedestrian cyclist and car safety, obviously, on the roads. And it's going to kick off next week on December 1. We're going to have some social media, some press releases at the beginning and the end. There's a mailer that's going in the mail next week. There's going to be some lawn signs and banners and some t-shirts. And we're excited. We're going to produce a video interview for the second press release, so we are excited to show Darien that we are taking pedestrian safety very important and raising awareness, especially around the holiday season. As the number of hours of light diminish per day, doesn't decrease the number of hours that people are on the roads, especially people walking to and from the train and so forth. So we are excited about having that kickoff next week, so please look for the mailer, and please understand that we're just looking to raise awareness. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is discuss and take action to approve the 2022 regular meeting and budget workshop schedule.
So in your packet, you all had two versions of the schedule, one that they just all listed out, and then one showing the colorful one. Right now, we have you scheduled for the traditional Monday at 7:30. I'm sorry, 7 o'clock. We do try and schedule you around the RTM meetings wherever possible, around the holidays, avoid school breaks, and try to find some places where there'll be more than a one-week break in between the meetings, so that you and I can all have vacations. So, we do need to get it approved. I think I sent it out to everybody, actually even before the election. We need to have it approved and submitted to the Town Clerk by the end of the year, but I like to have ours approved a little early because it helps with Parks and Rec, who makes all the room assignments, to do ours first, because we take priority. So I would not advise moving away from Monday nights because you'll mess everybody else up. I did send out today, you know, a schedule that shows what we plan to do at each of the budget workshops. That's not terribly important, that can always be moved around, but didn't anybody have issues with any of the dates?
So I think, do we confirm with the school schedule? Because I think a couple of these hit the school vacation...
I had the school schedule, what I saw online, I had us missing the school schedule. I had February vacations being the week of the 21st, and April vacation being the week of the 11th.
Oh, it is, okay. For some reason, I thought it was the week of the 14th, present week. Okay.
No, the only one that runs is our meeting December 27.
This year?
This year. That's the only one.
Maybe we can move that.
I have no problem moving that.
That's just vacation week, maybe?
Yeah. I think that did come up last year after you had approved the schedule, but we never discussed it any further. So we are scheduled to meet on the 13th and the 27th. State of the town is the 6th. So that, you know, would be...
And that's at 8, right?
The town is at 8. So, you know, we'd have to keep... If you wanted to move to the 6th, it would be a special meeting. Well, we need 30 days for it to be a regular meeting. So anything you're going to move around is going to be a special meeting.
Right.
And that's not that big a deal, but...
Well, it just means that you have to stick to the agenda.
It means you have to stick to the agenda, yes. You cannot add to the agenda of a special meeting. So let's get the 2022 wait out of the way first. Were there any issues with the dates on the...
No with the date. Could there be any consideration to make the start time 7:30 as opposed to 7?
That's up to all of you.
I think that was a discussion that might be interested in having, and I know Mr. Zagrasi also comes in from the city and...
Yeah, I mean, all the Board of Finance meetings were 7:30 just to accommodate the New York commuters. And if you're in New York as well, certainly 7:30 is just better than 7, but...
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it. What about you? I will defer to the rest of you if that is what people want.
I'm paid help, so I don't get a voice, so it, you know...
Just makes for longer days, but that's...
Well, I mean, the other alternative is, just from my point of view, the Board of Finance only met once a month, and the Board of Selectmen meets twice a month.
So here's the fun thing with that. The Charter actually says that the Board of Selectmen shall meet twice a month.
Which is totally fine. I get that we're following the rules. So that's fine. But the question would be is whether there's a way, maybe one of those meetings per month is by Zoom, right? Or you could organize the agenda such that those were topics that were easily, more easily covered by video or could be accommodated by video as opposed to having each one of these meetings every month be always, or each of the meetings being in person?
Yeah, you could, you know, you could do something like one meeting of the month be your business meeting, and the other meeting, since the Board, the past Boards have always interviewed all candidates for Boards and Committees to be appointed. And quite often, we would start at, well, you would start at like 6:00, 6:15, 6:30 to do those interviews before the regular meeting. You could make one meeting in the month the interview meeting, and one meeting the business meeting. The interview meeting would probably be more easily scheduled as a virtual. You could absolutely do that. The thing with the virtual meetings is that at a certain point, the public act that allows us to continue having virtual meetings expires.
Do we know when that is?
April. You can, under the FOI law, Boards can allow for virtual participation by members if the rules allow it. So basically, you all would have to come up with rules that say, under what conditions you would allow a member to participate virtually. That does then carry some complications if we, you know, you have to allow the public to participate virtually when you are participating virtually. So it does come with some complications, but they're not insurmountable.
Okay, well, the virtual or live, we can decide that later, but we should decide the time now.
Yes, sir.
Correct, yes.
I mean, not to get overly precise, but the train schedule, as it stands currently, there's a 5:50 train that gets in at 6:49, barring the unforeseen, I could be here at 7 o'clock. I mean, I'd be okay with taking that train, so we could keep the meetings at 7 o'clock. What would help me is not having to be here for a 7 o'clock meeting twice a week. And so if on occasion, some of these meetings...
We won't do them twice a week.
I'm sorry, twice a month.
Done.
My gosh, I tell you what, always accommodate. If periodically, it could be something that was virtual where you didn't have to be here for that meeting.
Okay.
Is the issue more like if they were both at 7:30, is that better? Or you just would prefer to have only one meeting where you had to be here?
Well, because that allows me to work until 7:00 at the office, and then I can zoom in from the office at 7:00. So I've got, that's a longer day for me. And I'll finish the meeting at 8:00, 8:30, 9:00, whatever that is, and just take a train home. That way, you guys get to keep the meeting at 7:00. I don't know how you feel about being in New York and doing a meeting from there.
Right.
But that would be the idea.
My only concern is that we do have executive session fairly regularly, where we have interviews or discussions, and the Finance Council will come in and update us on things. So that is my only concern. Sometimes we're at 6:15, sometimes 6:30.
Well, you know, the reason why we do the executive session, there's no reason why we have to do an executive session before the regular meeting.
Okay.
You could always schedule interviews within a regular meeting.
Okay.
If you wanted to go to a setup where you did one business meeting and one interview meeting, then that makes it even easier to do if you were thinking of doing the interviews virtually. I think that really lends itself to a virtual meeting.
So can you make a decision about virtual versus in-person? How close to the meeting time? Does that have to be decided well in advance?
For the whole Board or for...?
Yeah, for, like, if one of these meetings, say, on February, well, a regular meeting, say, on Monday, March 14, how far in advance would we have to decide whether that meeting needs to be in-person or virtual?
Well, when we post it, we need to, if it's going to be virtual, we need to post it. And if anybody's going to be virtual, we need to make that known because once a member of the Board is participating virtually, any member of the public needs to have the right to do the same. So...
So are you saying, Kate, that when we do this schedule, we would have to determine?
Doesn't that, no, it doesn't, like, you don't have to decide now.
Oh, okay.
But when we were going to post, you know, so the February 14 meeting has to be posted not less than 24, or at least 24 hours in advance. So when we do that posting, we need to know.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be decided at the beginning.
It does not have to be decided tonight, no.
Okay.
I would say you want to decide your start time tonight, because...
So I'm okay with sticking with 7:00. We'll figure out a way to make that work and...
What works for you, Marcy?
Time works for me.
Anytime.
I want to do 7:15 so you can powder your nose before you come in.
I'll look better for the next meeting. It'll be hard to look worse.
Mike, does that work for you? I know you're in the city.
That's fine. I mean, I can work around, you know, my schedule.
And is your preference, one meeting out of the two every month be remote?
That would be helpful. So I could make sure, as John was saying, that on those days, and I can work in my office, you know, right until start time as opposed to taking, because really, to be here at 7:00, it's a 6 o'clock train means leaving my office at around, you know, 4:45. So that would be helpful to have the second meeting have that option.
Sarah, you're good? I have a more flexible schedule, I think. So either is fine. I just know that the start time might be easier for those in the city. The only caveat I see on the calendar is budget meetings. Those are...
Yeah, so, I mean, those are achievable, too.
Yeah.
You know, we went to having a couple of early meetings a number of years ago, trying to get a lot done in one night, not keep everybody here. I will say, and Sarah, you know, you would remember too, since David's here.
Yeah.
I don't feel like those nights where we started at 5:30, we were here for like three hours.
No, there were some nights that we were, though. There were some nights that we were here from like 7:00 to 10:00.
We have a lot more flexibility with our time on the budgets than we used to, now that we don't print the budget book. So, you know, we have, the schedule has the budget being voted on by the Board Monday, February 7. It doesn't have to be presented to the Board of Finance until March 1. So we could probably, I mean, it does take time, even with it being electronically, it does take time for Jen to put everything together. But we could probably add more meetings in.
Okay.
And budgets, you know, budgets and other things that could be done virtually. I don't know how you all felt about doing it that way last year.
I mean, it wasn't bad. I mean, everyone was virtual at that point, so it was what it was.
Yeah.
I think the main budget presentation that you give, which is the overview for the Board of Finance, we would always pay attention to that one. It just gave us a complete picture. I would do that in person to listen to that, but individual department heads, I mean...
Well, we don't, with the exception of what we've got scheduled for the 26, we don't require the department heads to attend. So that first night, it's, you know, some people might show up just because...
It is helpful.
Yeah, they like to, but the majority of the department heads do not attend. It's part of our drive to make, you know, the Board of Selectmen understand the budget that I give you is my budget. I'm, you know, and you should be asking me why I put things in my budget. And then when you finish your budget and give it to the Board of Finance, they should be asking you why you put things in there, not going back to the department heads and asking all the little questions, so...
So to that, do you think that we should have a public hearing at some point? I know it was discussed last year.
You know, we've done it here and there. And the first time we did it was when Yvonne Klein was first Selectman. Very rarely have we had anybody show up when the Board of Selectmen held a public hearing. And I haven't attended a Board of Finance meeting, a public hearing on the budget, in a long time. I tried to avoid them even when I was Finance Director.
I wanted to avoid them, too.
But my experience was that outside of the representatives from the various school PTOs, nobody present.
I can count on one hand the number of people who came to speak at that hearing on the town budget. They were almost uniformly speaking about the Board of Education budget.
Okay.
So I don't think, there tends not to be a lot of interest.
Okay. Okay, so do we feel that the 7 o'clock start with the goal of having one remote and one live is the best solution?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No any more discussion?
I mean, we can even go earlier on the remote days. Does that help anybody? Is that way you're not in your office until 7?
I'll just be there, so it's fine.
I'm working right until 7 o'clock, so...
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise, then you would stay even longer because then you would go back to work.
Right.
Right, okay. All right. So if there are no additional questions, may I have a motion to approve the 2022 regular meeting and budget workshop schedules? All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Sarah?
Sarah, moved, okay.
Second?
One second.
Mike, seconds? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to discuss budget guidance for fiscal year '23, right?
Right.
Okay. Sorry, our numbers were a little bit confusing.
We added, right, when we changed the agenda at the last minute, the numbering for the packet. We didn't redo the packets. We just redid the agenda. Lesson learned there.
So we're going to discuss budget guidance for fiscal year '23, operating and capital budgets, and there is no handout, okay?
There is no handout.
And Kate's going to go with us.
Right. Actually, all we're looking for is if there is any wisdom, any directives that you all want to share with department heads. We are, they are working on finalizing their budget submissions, so if there's anything that you want to say to them, like, no new employees, or, you know, go hog wild. But seriously, if there's any...
Somewhere in between?
Somewhere in between. You know, it helps me a bit, too, to, you know, as I start formulating my proposal to you, to hear what your goals are. Keep the mil rate level, you know, no more than a certain percentage increase in the mil rate. Any thoughts you have where you'd like to see the budget go? And I know it's kind of hard because, you know, first meeting, second meeting, but it is helpful to department heads.
When do you want this information?
As soon as possible.
Okay. When's the...
I will start preparing, department heads are working on their budgets now. Some have actually already finalized them. I think, one thing you're going to see, there's probably going to be very little increases. I do know there's a couple departments who are looking to add personnel, but I'll need it as I start working on it, you know, through this month and into the beginning of January.
I had three things. I would like to know if we should be earmarking, and I think we should be earmarking money for the IT based upon recommendations that come out of the IT Steering and Governance Advisory Committee. I'd like to know what sort of funds, whether it's a land acquisition fund or what have you, but for flood mitigation. I'm not sure where exactly is the best place to fund that.
Okay.
And I know that we had posted part-time communications role, and I don't know if we, because it seemed to be a large amount of responsibility if we were to make it an FTE, which I would argue for, would change things, but I know that that's a whole other...
That's, yeah, that's a whole other discussion.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, we're actually having those discussions internally right now about what to do with that.
Okay.
Okay, but that's great feedback, Sarah.
If I could just add, just the notion of, as the departments look at their budgets, I hope that they bring forward the things that they feel they really need. It's obviously something that we could look at once it gets here, whether or not it's fiscally prudent or needed at the time, but I'm interested to know, you know, what they feel that they need and they should not feel reticent about expressing those needs. I wouldn't feel reticent about saying we can't do that if that's the judgment, but I like to hear what they have to say. And I don't know what their thoughts are in terms of sidewalks and crosswalks and things of that, you know, nature, but those are certainly interests that I have in addition to the things that Sarah mentioned and I'm sure that things that all of us as a group feel.
Yeah. And sidewalks will be, actually, Matt was there today. He's in the process of finalizing his five-year plan for sidewalks. Crosswalks are a slightly different animal and a little bit more complicated than most people realize.
We like sidewalks.
We like sidewalks, yes.
I guess I would build on, I think Mike and Sarah actually are exactly right. We ought to have sort of a baseline budget that feels... We ought to have sort of a baseline budget that feels flattish, right, without much activity, and then focus our attention and, and questions on new investments, right? FTA additions of staff or additional expenditures where we need to make them, kind of to, to your point, so that we're not spending a lot of time going through things that are changing only slightly or reflecting an inflation increase or things that haven't increased, but it's kind of an obvious reason why, whether we had these additional summer programs or there was the state requirement or whatever. I can discuss that for a couple minutes, then you kind of move on because it's, it makes sense and it's obvious. But to get to those, what I would call non-obvious discussions, right, which are, there's a choice, there's a real choice to be made. And so what I'd like to hear is when a department has got something or can represent their, their needs and it's not an obvious choice, and something that we really need to debate that we focus our time in that way. Because we're gonna have to make that case to the Board of Finance to justify anything that, that kind of goes beyond a baseline expenditure.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to appropriate FEMA share of acquisition costs of twenty-seven Crimmins Road.
So unfortunately, after, after we did the appropriation of the town's share of the acquisition, we learned that FEMA had changed the way they operate, and it used to be, we both brought checks to the closing. And so we only had to take care of our share. They've changed it where now we have to write the check. They then reimburse us. And so proper accounting says that we should appropriate the funds that they are giving us, or that they will reimburse us. So if we're gonna write a check for, you know, it's, the total costs are estimated at six hundred and seventy. If that's what we're gonna be writing checks for, we need to have an appropriation for that full amount. The source is the FEMA grant, so it's no more tax dollars involved. It's really an accounting transaction that we're taking care of here.
What was the Board of Finance discussion on that point and how did they vote this week?
I do not know.
They voted unanimous.
Yep.
Oh, they, yes, I do know, I was there. There was discussion, so the discussion was, there was one no. That was on the different, the different issue.
Yeah, it was on the old grant, the grant.
I didn't want to hear about that too, but on the House first.
I think that, you know, boy, I'm trying to remember now because I was there. The focus of the night was so much more on the other appropriation that we asked for.
Yeah, this was, I was there also. This was a very simple discussion because it is just an accounting situation, so.
And was the whole FEMA change a surprise or is this something we should have known? It seems kind of bad that we.
I, yeah, it's something we probably shouldn't have known.
When was the last time we did it?
Last time we did it was twelve years ago.
Yep, so our emergency management person was using just an outdated form.
Okay. I mean, we've talked about this at length, the RTM's are pretty, this is, seems kind of perpontory, given all the prior approvals.
Any other discussion? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request to appropriate FEMA share of acquisition costs of twenty-seven Crimmins Road? Sarah, may I have a second? Marcy, seconds? All in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss potential capital budget requests from the Board of Selectmen.
So I realized I probably should have put a little something in your packet to explain this a little bit more to you. But this came out of the budget process from last year, where while we, while the Board of Selectmen was reviewing my proposed budget, there was a capital project that they wanted and asked to add it at that point. So we thought really going forward, the Board of Selectmen should have an opportunity to discuss things that they want as the Board of Selectmen to include as a capital project in the request right from the get-go. What I gave you in your packet is the current six-year capital improvement plan. So it shows you, you know, an idea of the things that are out there. That were in the plan this last year, that doesn't mean they're still gonna be in the plan next year, but you know, there may be things that you want to do at Highland Farm. You know, there's been talk of a shed so that we could store some equipment there, put a, a more permanent porta potty there, but discreet, you know, discreetly positioned. There's been talk about signage for there, trees. There may be another park in town or another property in town that you want to make some improvements to. So what I'm looking to hear from you is are there things that you have seen that you as selectmen want to, you know, want the town to do that maybe another department wouldn't have included in the budget? So if you get that stuff to me, then I can put it in the budget.
May I ask a question on this?
Mm-hmm.
The fire commission, the donations jumped because those were the contributions still for the fire trucks. If you look at, on the six-year capital plan that you've put out, when you look at the ones adopted for this year and then next year, that's, the difference is the contribution that was to be made for the fire trucks, and we still have to figure out.
Well, that's, so that's what we would have to put in with the policy that the Board of Finance had come up with previously regarding funding.
Right.
Over the life of the.
And this is the, if we do not bond?
Right. And that's not our call.
Correct. No, I just, I'm understanding the differences in.
Yeah, so I fully expect that we'll have a capital request from Fire Commission for funding for the replacement reserve. And I'll likely put that in, and I, I suggest that it remain where, but let the Board of Finance do what they wish to do.
Yeah, no, I just was trying to understand the differential.
Well, if, one of the things that did not come out clearly out of that process was just taking a fresh look at the vehicle replacement schedule. And so kind of getting a sense of that as it is, had overlays on this particular schedule would help me. Because then what we can have is a point of view about what needs to be replaced and when. Then the Board of Finance can decide how they want to pay for that. And the purpose of the switch over from the reserve was to get away from accruing for that expense and taking advantage of the bonding environment and getting rid of the reserve and just bonding trucks like we do any other major expenditure that which they can do, but we just need to decide what's the best replacement schedule for all these guys. And of course, we've been thoughtful about that before, but just might be a good idea as part of this year's budget effort to take a fresh look.
Absolutely.
So I was on last week's Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Which is great because they were going over their discussion about after they had walked through all the parks. And I guess I want to make sure that if there's work that needs to be done to parrot tree, whether the site or the building, or weed, or short lane, or that we have that in there. I think, you know, we've had an incredible couple of years where people are really using our parks and our facilities and will make sure that they reflect how we would like them to look.
Right, so when you work on the budget, you'll get plenty of time to talk about what everybody else put in?
Yep.
But what I want to know sometime this month, and sometime next month, December, what do you want to put in? Are there things that, you know, like this is what was put in last year? So it should give you a sense of the kind of things that are out there. Are there things you think we should be doing that are, have not been reflected in here?
Or discussed.
Or discussed. So something that you want to add that nobody else is putting in there.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this stuff is maintenance-related that is important, but really is not a headline matter if I think about sort of public interest and all that. The things that the public are interested in are around flood mitigation, sidewalks, the maintenance of the assets we have, those sorts of things. I think we're gonna have a lot.
You're gonna get those, yeah.
We're gonna get that, but we might have more to say about that in terms of taking a look at that. One thing that would help me would be to get all of this in a single spreadsheet that maybe we could sort it a bit and say, let's, let's have all this in one spot that adds up to these grand totals and maybe set up a section that feels more maintenance-related, not controversial, good hygiene type stuff that we would reasonably do in any case. And then other stuff that goes beyond that, that's really worthy of debate. And we could also talk about maybe in prior years that's not reflected here, of what we've done in the past that were investment-related and just give us a sense for, for how the Board has thought through these special capital projects in the past. But I think it is a good idea to spend the next couple of weeks kind of reflecting on what we've heard from the public. There was a lot of discussion during the campaign about these sorts of things, again, mostly sidewalks and flooding and what have you, but other topics as well. And if we have a prioritized list like this, we can go back to that list and say, well, are those things on there or do we really need to take a fresh look? But we ought to set as a goal, say, our next meeting, to have those perspectives back.
Can I ask a question? Then, this is something I don't remember offhand. If we were to say, put a new building on a park, what is this rachalda which a building committee then goes into play? Is it a million?
Million dollars.
Okay.
But that would be an interesting, you, the Parks and Recreation has control of the parks, so it'd be kind of odd for the Board of Selectmen to say we want to put a building in a park.
Got it. Oh, but Highland, because Highland is, is ours, yes.
That's why I, you know, kind of highlighted that because it is, you know, town property, not, it's not a park.
Right. It's town property.
Yeah.
Which is also the same for Edgerton.
Correct. Edgerton is town property, not a park.
And Parrot Tree Point is a.
Is a park.
Is a park, okay.
In terms, just in terms of process, when you say hear from us, would you like us to email these thoughts or we wait for the next public meeting? Just discuss them or what's the best way for us to help you with those ideas, should we have it?
I'd like to put it on the agenda for, I don't think you need to, well, I probably would put it on for action to vote on a list of selectmen projects that you want to, and you can all bring your ideas and duke it out and.
How about the area behind the middle school? Is that?
Edgerton. That's what we, yeah, we're referring to, yeah. And that actually is one that brought it up because it was in the middle of the budget process last year that we decided that we wanted to add something for clearing it, making it presentable. But that may be something that you might want to see for the development there. To install some equipment or do other, some kind of other action there.
Have you received comments or inquiries from the public, say, in the last six months for capital projects or investments that are not reflected on these lists?
I personally have not, no.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we set as a goal, say, the next meeting, to, to bring all that and pop it on the agenda and we'll just make sure to discuss it.
Sounds good to me.
And I heard sidewalks a couple of times. The sidewalk budget was increased fifty percent last year and it is a five-year plan and it, and it, that number continues for the next four years, so the sidewalks are, are being addressed.
Fantastic.
Okay, so this was a discussion, okay. Next item is discuss and take action to accept a donation from the Darien Police Association.
So as Sarah spoke about earlier, we have a pedestrian safety campaign ongoing. And it's primarily funded from the Police False Alarm Fund. But the Darien Police Association, which is basically the bargaining unit, the, for the police officers, they offered to donate five thousand dollars towards the expenses. So they paid Noble House directly, so we should accept that gift on behalf of the town. So you have a resolution. We usually do a nice resolution when somebody is donating, so you'd lots of wear asses.
As long as there's a therefore, yes, I see that, okay, I feel better. This is terrific, very, very generous, that's great.
I very much appreciate the Police Association adding to this.
Okay, any additional discussion? All right, I would like to say also that this is a very generous gift and it's really appreciated. May I have a motion to?
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Oh, okay, okay.
You just need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution to accept the donation from the Darien Police Association? Okay, Mike, I saw you out of the corner of my eye, second?
Sarah.
Sarah, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, the next agenda on the, the next item on the agenda, sorry about that, is appointments. And we covered this a little bit in the past, but each of the committees that are on the agenda need a representative from the Board of Selectmen. And the ARPA committee will work to direct COVID recovery funds to the appropriate projects in town. The Ox Ridge Building Committee is well underway with constructing the new elementary schools at Ox Ridge. The Blight Review Board works to assess residents' blight concerns. And the IT Steering Committee is a new committee that will work to evaluate and provide advice on IT purchases. So currently, Sarah Newman has volunteered to work on the elementary school construction project, that building.
The other, the three.
The three, yes, which is not on this list, but which is, when it gets going, will be a very, will be a very active committee. So at this time, I did speak to a couple of people and I do think there are a couple of people that are willing to do this, but I'm going to let them volunteer. So do we have a volunteer for a selectman on the ARPA Grant Advisory Committee?
Which ones did you discuss? I can't.
We discussed that.
Why don't you just tell us?
You, you're doing that.
I'm doing. I would like to volunteer. Can I volunteer?
Yes, you can volunteer. Wow, chakaroo. Okay. Do we have any other volunteers for the ARPA Committee? Okay, may I?
Sorry, I have this rapidly advancing decrepitude and senility. I cannot remember all these calls, but yes.
Do I need a motion for this?
Yes, you do.
Okay, may I have a motion to appoint John Zagrodzky to the ARPA Grant Advisory Committee? Okay, Marcy first, Sarah seconds, all in favor?
Let me discuss this, this is really, I'm kidding, okay.
Okay, excellent. All in favor? Unanimous? Great. Thank you. Thank you, John, for volunteering there.
My arm is, so let me untwist my arm.
Okay, next on the agenda is the appointment of a selectman to the Ox Ridge Elementary School Building Committee. And the ARPA Committee, we have not, we will be reaching out for meeting schedules, but I can tell you that the Ox Ridge, the last meeting for this year is on twelve nine, December ninth, and it's a Zoom meeting at ten o'clock AM. Do I have any volunteers? Marcy, do I have any other people that want to volunteer or a discussion? Okay, may I have a motion to approve Marcy to the Ox Ridge Elementary School Building Committee?
Sure.
Okay, actually, I saw Mike first, but do I have a second, John?
Second.
John, seconds, okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Okay. Next on the agenda is the appointment of a selectman to the Blight Review Board. And that last meeting for this year will be on December eighth at five thirty PM in person. And I have not actually discussed this appointment or the next appointment with anyone, so I would entertain a discussion on anyone that might be interested.
Well, you know, being the rookie, I'm happy to do either, either of the two that are left.
I see we're doing virtually so far, if that helps any. I T. We're doing virtually so far, if that helps you any.
Well, you know, usually I actually, I work from home on Wednesdays when possible, so.
That works.
That would be fine. Because it's gotta be the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Terrific.
So I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other volunteers that want to step forward?
So are you doing the blight?
I'll do the blight.
Okay.
All right, if I T.'s virtual, I'll sign up for that as well.
Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint Mike Burke to the Blight Review Board?
So moved.
Sarah moves.
Second.
Marcy seconds. All in favor? Thank you so much. Unanimous. Our next appointment is a Selectman to the IT Steering and Governance Advisory Committee. And again, this hasn't, um, Kate will be sending out something on, um, meeting schedules.
We did have a brief meeting last Thursday with, um, those members who could be there giving us some ideas on, um, what they needed to know from us, um, as staff. So we, our plan at this point is to keep those meetings virtual. Because the meeting, the committee is about half-staff. Um, we're trying to do them, um, before the end of the workday for us, which is one of the reasons for keeping it virtual. So that the non-staff members don't have to leave their work to get there, so.
But there are some terrific people.
There are some terrific people and, um, Holly Schultz was asking a lot of questions and she has a lot of knowledge. And, um.
That's great.
Rob Cardone has a lot of really good ideas. So I, you know, not all the members of the public were able to be there, but, um.
That's great.
I think we have some good stuff.
Yeah, we interviewed a few, so. Okay, so do I have any volunteers for the IT Steering and Governance Committee? Wow, that's awesome. Do I have any other volunteers other than John? Okay, could I have a motion to appoint John Zagrotzky to the IT Steering and Governance Advisory Committee? Sarah moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Thank you. These are all, um, really important committees and I appreciate everybody, um, wanting to work on them. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of November 8th, uh, which was a regular ma, uh, meeting. Are there any edits to the minutes? Actually, I have one edit on page three. Um, just delete the, um, at the top, Kate, where it says motion to request? Yeah, just delete the, or motion?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to delete, um, do I have to say all this? We're gonna delete a motion to table this item until November 22nd, 2021. So, uh, could I have a, are there any other comments? No? Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Sarah, Marcy? All in favor? Okay. Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Kate, do we have any public comments?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Okay, so on the agenda review, this is where we, um, would speak about what we would like to see coming up for future meetings. And, um, I think it would be great to do a couple of things here. One is I'd like to invite Wayne Fox to the next meeting to discuss any outstanding litigations that are happening right now, and we would do that in executive session.
And Wayne would bring, um, his whole team, so you get to meet them. He's the one we'll deal with most. Um, and he does come in when we have any settlements, he'll come in and discuss them specifically, but it, um, I think it'd be good for you all to know the things that are out there and ongoing. And, you know, he can bring you up to date on, on all those issues.
So is everybody okay with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so that would be executive session. We also should set a date. This is, um, I, I think that, I think that, I, I looked through the material and I found it really helpful. So the orientation for the newborn of Selectmen. Um, and a lot of department heads come in, so this is good if we can all do it at one time. So could we figure out a date?
I, you, you all need to tell me what works for you, then all that lineup the department heads.
Okay, and it's something we do in person, right?
Right, right. I mean, this is the first time we're doing a formal one, when, um, Sarah and Krista and David all joined the board, we did it informally in my office, but we have PowerPoints. And we have our technology.
You got fancy.
We got fancy. Um, but, you know, I want to run you through what your responsibilities are, some of which might surprise you. Don't know if you all knew you were the parking authority. So yes, I mean.
No more tickets for me.
Oh, no. Sorry.
That's why I need an orientation.
There you go. Yeah, great Board of Finance member. Really fiscal.
So we'll go through what your responsibilities are, what I do as the town administrator. I plan to have Jen Charneski, um, will go through budget, give you a little bit of a lesson in fund accounting, which, um, you know, for people, if you hadn't a counting background, you probably wouldn't know what that was, you know, you wouldn't be familiar with it. She'll go through some of the things about the audit. I'll talk to you about FOI. I want to have Jeremy in to bring you up to date on all the different issues facing, um, cleaning and zoning, um, in the building department. Ed Gentile to talk about drainage and sewer system issues. And then the chief to bring you up to speed on the Police Accountability Act and what that means for, um, the police department. So, um, you know, we'd originally talked about having it on a Friday, um, right after the election. And we were allotting three hours, um, to give you presentations to answer your questions, so, um.
Does that work, Kate, when, when, um, people are theoretically not working on Friday?
If you're closed on a Friday, is that a problem?
Well, the, we actually usually have staff in the building. There's, because building is not closed. Building department is not closed, and the fire marshal are not closed, so, um, you'll find Darren here on Fridays.
And Ed often?
And Ed often, so I, I don't think, um, there might be, you know, a grumble or two, but I don't think most people will have a problem with that.
Okay, does Friday sound best for everybody?
I, I gotta go look at my Fridays over the next month and tell you.
Okay.
Would this be Friday afternoon? Is this?
It could be an afternoon. I, you know, I think the one, you know, like a Saturday, you know, I'll get more grumbles, um, but.
That's crazy.
Not for me.
Not for me. That's clearly easier than taking a full half-day off work to, to do that, so. But anyway, I'll give you some Fridays and Saturdays that work.
Yeah, give me, if you give me dates, that way I can, um, see what, you know, what we can do. I'd hate to, in evening, I don't want people getting punchy.
As opposed to normal?
Pardon?
As opposed to normal punches.
As opposed to normal punches, yeah. But, um, you know, give us, give us some dates.
Twelve and thirty-six damn hours.
Will these sessions be recorded? I think it would be fascinating for people in the town to become as knowledgeable as I'm sure. I would, if I'm part of the function.
No, it's, you know, we wouldn't have the right to do it in executive session. So if TV 79 wanted to broadcast it, record it, whatever, um, that's absolutely fine.
We did not previously.
You weren't on the board yet.
Did we do it before?
Mm-hmm.
Do we really?
I think so.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna delete all the stupid questions I was going to ask, so.
Send it to me, I'll ask them.
Well, you know, but if there, if you have questions and, you know, we'll make sure that I cover them.
No question is ever stupid.
So that we make, make sure that they're covered.
Okay, so why don't we, so Kate and I will come up with some Fridays and, um, send them out and see what we get as far as, uh.
Availability.
Availability. Okay.
Oh, yeah, doodles?
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda likes doodles.
Yeah.
They work?
They do work. Okay, anything else for the agenda review? Anyone else have anything? Okay, um, I would just like to say thank you, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Hope everyone has a wonderful time with their family. And, um, do I need to call for a motion to adjourn?
You need to call for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mike? And Sarah, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Kate.